In your microphones, we talk. Hence the pickup better on zooms. Just push the button and yell. Which button? Yes, actually, you know what?
Yell.
They'll review this at the first council meeting in September.
Are we ready to go? Yes.
You're good to go. And anybody hear this? Push the button.
Yeah.
There it is. That's what you get to do.
All right, so we're here tonight at 7:00 PM Wednesday, August the 30th. And this is the meeting of the Winter zoning Board of Appeals. I'm Dennis Harnish, I'm the Chair. And we have Greg Chamberlain and Roger Hanson. We three are presently. We have terms of office. These other two gentlemen have been on the board and they've been applied to go back on the board. They may. Ron here has been around forever, Ron Taylor. And Alan knows everything too. So they're sitting in tonight, but they can't vote on this particular appeal, so.
Can they participate? You're distracted?
Yes.
Yeah, they just. Right.
Essentially, what it means is you need all three of us to vote for you. Because you need three votes. So you could, you could wait and hope that one of these fellows gets. But they probably will get appointed, but I don't know how long that's likely to take or whatever. Or you could just go ahead. The only downside is if you don't get your variance tonight, you'd have to reapply and you'd have to pay money again. But you wouldn't lose the ability to do that. So anyhow, do you want to go ahead with this tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. This would be a variance from a front yard setback to 20 feet, 14 feet. And it's a, from my point of view, it's kind of a strange one because it's not from a road, but it's from a utility right of way. And it's for the construction of a garage, 24 feet by 24. Behind your home in the residential address, which 137 Memorial Drive. It's also, it's on a map, 37 lot, 36. Now, I went by there today and took a picture. So I don't know, has everybody else seen the place?
I see with a topic. Have you seen the place?
Pictures on here.
Okay. Well, what I would like, if you would come up here and tell me if this is the picture. If this is your place.
Yes, it is. But I got pictures in the backyard that will show that.
That would be good. But what I suggest is, first of all, you've identified a photo I took today. And I'm going to send this to Mark. By email, and you'll add that to the file. But then if you have pictures to show us, and especially the backyard, we'd like to see them.
It's happening, right? So.
But before we get there, may I ask you a couple of questions about this? I was standing, I think, on your neighbor's driveway where.
Yeah, some of the alleys, yeah.
And this is your house. Why don't you rest you get behind me so we can? You want to.
We can let him present. Sorry? You can let him present his case for us?
I wanted to have this and then he can present the case. But I just wanted to have it understood where we are and what's happened.
It is definitely a unique situation. It's a unique situation.
All right. Would you rather have him present his case? All right, we'll go with that. But in that presentation or afterwards, we'll ask you some questions about this.
Yeah. So basically. So that's my backyard. And you can see the McNally's garage. Right here.
Maybe we pass it around.
If you can put it on that, that would be great.
I don't know if it will or not. See if it creates.
I don't have things.
But you're gonna pass it around.
So there's only three pictures, but I guess what I'm saying is. If I have to cut more, there's.
The little. We'll be happy to see them. And it's so much easier, I think, for us.
Yeah, pass it on first. And then, and then you can.
Yeah.
You can just slide left and right.
Touch me? There's other pictures.
There's two other pictures that they want to look. Yeah, well, we've got, I guess, saying.
So we're looking, this is the right away, it's on your left, and we're looking down at your neighbor's garage.
Correct.
I can kind of see an opening to the left, and I actually see a power cord there. That's the.
Yeah, that's.
Seem to be right.
Because of a, of a.
Right.
Right. In fact, where you get your power from? Is that?
Yeah, yeah.
And your neighbors?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So basically, I don't want, I don't want to cut any more trees. Because of.
If you have. Do you think the other photos would be helpful too?
Well, I looked at them and I didn't.
I don't see. There you go. Oh, I'm better.
You see, this is, this is the CMP right of way. Correct. This is where you want to build your garage.
Yeah, so you can see where I had staked out.
Yeah.
Which would have been in line with my neighbors. Who have their, their five feet.
Right away.
You can see that garage and the next blue one there. Got to see it.
Why did you change it to 14 feet?
Because of the bylaws, I guess.
Did, was this after a discussion?
I think, I think. Literature was. Maybe Mark can help with this.
It's a 20 foot. We have to set back 20 feet. And we're trying to build a 24 foot garage.
Right.
And it's 50 feet deep total. If we do the math on that, we just need to move it a little bit closer. The six feet is all we're asking for, forgiveness, to bring it closer to the right of way. So it wouldn't be setback from 12 feet from that right of way. But it's more than 20 feet if you include the four right of way from a property line.
I guess what I'm presenting is. All the garages, the buildings. On my neighbor's side. Five feet from right away. You can drive a CMP utility truck down through there, you can bring a pontoon boat. And I just didn't want. There's actually a spot up here. Behind my, where I want to build the garage. Because I love the acorns. And then there's Pennwood Drive right behind me. And I'm sure they like that lot for being ending them. So I want to build and keep the uniform to the rest of the garage. But if we need to redraw it and do it over. Because I'll pull the plug if I gotta do it. If I had to cut more trees. I don't want to do it.
This is really an unconventional right of way because it doesn't have an entrance and a exit. It's literally there, I think, maybe for CMP. But it doesn't say CMP. It was just an easement for the electricity, we didn't have to be there. There's a gentleman out here who's actually identified.
Our neighbor next door, okay?
Your neighbor?
The right of way is from drop off. Up, up Memorial Drive. There was a 10 foot right of ways coming up. When they turn to go across, straight across, become 30 feet. Okay? If you go up in, in Louise Pivotal. For what? I don't know what's old house. It comes up there, when it turns there, the next house over has a garage that's been built within the last. I'm going to say 15 years. It's within five feet of the right of way.
That's the one that was licensed, the variance was.
I think he got a variance.
Okay? Then if you come over, there's a lot between the, the next lot, I got a variance. And the thing is, they said I could build within five feet of the right of way, which I did. Okay? I have 20 feet behind me. And I, the side lots, I have a variance, 24 by 24. A lot there on a 50 by 50. Lot to beat all the. Situations.
Do you have a, do you use your cars in the, in the garage?
That's not our idea either.
No, no, Bill. I know Bill, by the way. And I go for.
There'll be no driveway to it. It's basically to put my stone wheels. My workshop. It's basically.
Outbuilding.
Right.
But it's not, we're not going to use it as car vehicles.
Yeah, I know.
How do you even get vehicles from this Memorial Drive?
Right, right, right. The right way is a bill.
There's a right way all the way up and across. Here.
Yeah. So it's gravel or there's a?
Nothing.
Looks pretty wet.
It is very wet. Our demo, yeah.
Yeah, right now, you probably could not come through Jennifer O'Brien's yacht in the back. You probably would stay right there. They're in the.
It's not usable safely. It's, we're looking to go to behind the on our lot.
It's just because coming in with the truck right now, they'd be, they'd be way down that. Get in there.
Well, I was wondering, I mean, you, you got a approval, approval from the planning board to add dirt there, right?
Right.
And, and so how, how even would that, how do you even do that? How do you get the truck in there to get the dirt out?
Well, so if you look at pictures, you can do, so I got that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do.
The identity access, I want.
Yeah.
So between the McNally's and me.
Right.
Because McNally's driveway goes further than mine.
Bill, do you have the log cabin?
Yes. That, that's his garage.
Yeah.
So. I have a shed there now. That would be.
Yeah, a red shed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's shown on.
That's getting taken away.
Good.
And they're, yeah. And they're gonna use that to get up through. But when I had the pool and tree come clear that block. They came through.
They came up through.
Behind.
They came up off Memorial Drive across from Scott Gardens. As the driveway going up. House across, they came in there with a.
Oh. Quad trucks.
Cherry bigger.
Yeah.
Picked all that wood up and drove up. Actually, they backed back up because they couldn't walk the other side of it. Keep that.
So you're hoping for some dry weather like the rest of us?
How about the all that, yes.
And I love the wage, but I'm not, like I said, I do not want to. Cut any more lumber. Not because of money. Because I don't want, like I said, it's a buffer between nothing, Pennwood Drive. And there is a deer plot back there. I don't know if they go to the lake, but they love the acorns, I see the traps, scat.
Well, what's the distance between the back of your?
Well, that's, that was one of my questions. It's 50 feet deep and it's 78.6 feet wide. Right, you're putting, you want to put the garage on the other side of the right of way from your house?
Yeah, exactly.
16 feet up the edge of the right of way is what he wants. So if you go to the edge of the, if you go to the east side of that right of way. Which is the part, he wants to go 20 feet, he wants to go.
I want to be far deep like.
But, so that's where he wants his setback from. He had that fired up to that right of way. The back. So he's 24 feet by 24 feet. And the 20 foot setbacks, that's 44 feet. So that only give him six feet on the back. Issue right?
And that's what he's worried about is the back.
I don't want to, I don't want to take any vegetation.
The ecosystem, right.
You've got, you've got a. Yeah. So you can see the, the right way coming up from here. Well, it also comes up right there. You don't have the section in terms of.
This is one of them. Correct. Yeah. I don't. So I, are you, are you done or why don't we keep it open? Because we're obviously having a kind of a dialogue and it's useful for me at least to.
Sure, we have no, I have any questions, please, still ready.
Since you want to ask a question, go ahead and ask him a question. And then, you know, we should take.
You're gonna use this garage for storage, not for your cars and your truck area?
Correct.
You're not going to remove any per, you know, major quantities or just going to level off? You're gonna put a cement pad down? We're doing total. That's, that's cold, I know, and I've seen this. This is hopefully. It, to me, as a non boarding member tonight. It may get strange that you're putting it on the other side of right of way. Because CMP has.
So if it was truly a CMP right of way, we wouldn't have to be here because there is no setbacks to a CMP right of way.
Right, right.
So that's, that's what I'm trying to.
So I don't have. But he can't put it on the west side of that right of way because he just doesn't have enough property.
He does have enough property, I understand that.
Yeah. But that's a back lot, so that's a separate lot from.
That's a separate lot from his home.
And without that.
You have two lots. Okay, all right, now I can.
And without that right of way, honestly, that's a back lot, which is not conforming. So there's really no use for that unless. You know, you put a building on it, but you, this, this lot can't be.
I was trying to figure out.
Building is a house, that's for sure.
Why he came, why he wanted to put it on, and I went up there and looked at. You know, where, where you had it cleared. And I says. The house is there. He's got a 30 foot. Right of way. He's gonna put it there. It's, you know, why are you going to put a garage? It's, it's not for cars, it's not for vehicles.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right.
Or on tractor, a stone wheel. We have no storage, we have. You have that little shed. You're like me, I have a little shed. I'd love to put a garage on my, my property, I probably could in a heartbeat.
Oh, I'm asking.
Bring the permit in, let's go.
Okay, so all this.
Question. Is this 50 or 58? I've heard two different numbers.
50 feet deep, so we're free and wide.
So then this 12 feet on the back, that is correct.
Was it called?
So you have to have a variance on that as well. This is.
No, because it's setback to the real line, it's only 10 feet.
Well, okay, yeah, thank you.
That's general residential zoning, that's not showing.
So Mark, you said something about if it's a CMP right of way, a, a real CMP right of way, there's no.
There's no setbacks. To a CMP right of way.
Okay, but this is something different because it's been, it's on the map as a 30.
In that, in that.
And that's.
The Penniman subdivision, that's what that's. That, it's really strange how they did that, but it's done in the 60s, so, I mean, you. I mean, you couldn't do that now because it's not a big enough line, but. And with that right of way, the way that it's almost creating a backyard.
And another question, you don't want to put your, your rear setback to be 10? And move your variance to 16 just because of trying to eliminate, they'll force to eliminate more trees. Exactly, I like, and keep it symmetrical with the rest of the neighbors' drive. Front door. Crossboard.
Well, if you're 14 feet back and Bill's five feet back, how's that?
Smaller lot.
Yeah.
Okay. But basically, if you were to put a line from the front of your garage to Bill's, it would be straight line. Okay.
Right, and that's what I want.
Wanted the setback because they want easy. They want it to look beautiful, uniform.
You know, it's more of a. The garage is all buildings. After me. Better by the big right of way. And then I gotta cut more trees to go back. It just doesn't make sense to me, I can't.
Well, is there? There's a house behind this lot too, if they're on Pennwood?
Yeah, they're on Pennwood.
That match still or is that?
Yeah, I just want to know, but their house.
If you're looking at the backyard, that's just up to right.
Right.
There's one on the left and then the one that's directed, I mean, it's quite a bit back.
How, what would you estimate the distance of the house to?
We can't hear them.
You're not trying to give them any.
Well, they have 136 feet.
And they're very tall. So yeah, that, that's like, they're, they're great off and was available.
Okay, so they're, they are always off, they are.
Right.
And that's why the, like I said, the. Vegetation and deer and whatever. High level there because they have room.
So Mark, we talked earlier today and there was something like about a. In 1991, there was a variance granted. Was it the bill? Was it, did you get any variance from the board to build your garage up there?
When, when I went to give my permit. The board said I had to have 20 feet sit back of all four sides. So I got a variance. My back lot, my back of my garage is 20 feet from the back line. Okay? It is five feet from the front. And I think I got 15 feet on each side of this, that's it. Because it's locked, it's 70 feet.
So among other things, you got a variance from the right of way.
Yeah.
Of five feet. Okay.
And.
And your garage is 24 by 24?
Yes, yes.
Same size.
Same size. And if you skip one lot from one. East, I guess you could say. There's another garage there, that's a gambrel. I think that's 24 by 24, it may be 30 by 30.
It's also in the right of way?
It's right on the right of way. When the, when the right of way comes up and turns, there's a building right there.
But basically, nobody uses it, they're right, they're, they're garages for vehicles, they use it for stuff.
Well, then, that's a paved, that's.
Oh, the first part is paved?
That's paved all the way up there.
Then it just turns to grass, then I saw it work.
When you say up there, are you saying south along Memorial Drive or north along Memorial Drive? We have a picture of the map in our.
You know, we're getting better than I did.
I wish I had a drawing board, that'd be better.
How about this one though?
Yeah, we're, we, we have, it's in part of our.
I think by the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you, you see it comes up. You come up the drive, it should come up, I don't know, come up the drive like this. The right way is right here. This one comes up.
Yeah.
Goes like this right here.
Right.
This is paved all the way up.
Okay, it's called Varroa R4 something here.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's for access because there are structures up at the back. You have to have a road in it.
And for the first couple of lots, it's paved in there or?
Oh, yeah, it's all paved, it's a paved ton driveway.
Well, so even though it's on the, even though it's on the CMP right of way.
Or CP right of way.
They run, I mean, that's the way, and they spin there.
Well, they, they did it. So yeah.
CMP has maintained that right of way.
I got it.
So they get to their, their transmission lines. And if, if you know, like everybody else in this room knows. How much water do we have on the surface of the ground everywhere we go? You know, that was not paved up there, CMP couldn't get up there.
Right.
Power on especially in summer.
Right.
They have a better shot in the winter times. All right.
Ask some questions.
Sure.
Thanks. I think number, I have this question to ask, and I think most of the board today answers by now, but. This seems like a kind of a historical encumbrance from whenever this was first developed. 60, 70 years ago.
54, yeah.
So apparently at that time, there was a desire to have access to those small lots. On the other side of the right of way from. Your lots, correct?
We're assuming, yeah, we're currently due to the area.
So you're, you're on 22, you want 36 also, 21 wants 38, 20 wants 39.
Yeah.
Well, so let me ask, or did it work the other way around? Did CMPs? Impose a right of way and then these other lots had to be?
I'd create.
Right, okay.
I, I was thought, I mean, maybe Bill knows better, that. When the Penniman's. Split up lots. They wanted. Buffer between Pennwood. And our lots.
Yeah, that was before my thing.
Yeah.
That's all me, as you told me.
Great, so pass down to us, yeah, but.
Okay. Right, that's it. The same, I remember the board had questions. You've been asked a question. Pardon? You've been asked a question. More questions? That's what I knew. Let me see if there's anything from this photo that I was interested in. I think basically you discussed it, which was that. Your, your plans would be if you get this permit to. Tear down that red shed that's next to your house, which I think it has new stuff in it now.
That's we know, because I was.
And you would intend to people that if we have to get.
Is there another little red shed there too?
The little garden.
Those are both there when you. Again, having the storage, it's probably to be at least one of those that would help with that.
See if I can.
Is it in the way? Is any shed, you have two sheds then? Well, there's one right behind the house. So my house looks like this, there's one right there, this little tiny one that's just got gardenery and stuff. And then the one that comes up next to the alleys. Where there would access. Get the garage, build it.
Removing that.
We're moving now. And basically. It's a lot, or moving it elsewhere.
It would stay on our property, hopefully, like I said, we're hoping to relieve the need for it all by building the garage and use it in storage.
My experience was if I didn't. Move any earth to the old driveway to the garage. That I could keep all dead. We've already moved, put a ditch on the back of my house. And then we would have to get rid of all the garage, both sheds. Perfect for Robert, as long as the shed can be moved, we don't care about that, as long as it has. Put in its, in the appropriate setbacks as well, that's all.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, like, hopefully we won't even need it. If we're able to build the garage, it'll alleviate the need for the shed.
I don't like it anymore.
Right, and we'd like to get rid of all the extra buildings, there's just one, but. Yeah.
As long as it's, it's in the, within the setbacks, that's all.
It's all stuff that we, it came with the house, we bought the house in 2020.
So your home and the McNally's home, perhaps another one next to you, are all set back pretty far from Memorial Drive, right?
Yes.
Much further than the average houses.
I have a 160 foot driveway. Okay? My driveway comes up.
Must be hard for your wife to drive.
Turned into grass for about 15, no, about 15 feet, then it's the right of way. Okay? Guess what, folks? I plow that in the wintertime because my truck is in my garage. And that's where my toys are. You know, I built, built it 30 years ago. Stole my boat, on my barge, it's, it's like, stole my barge on the other side. You know, so, you know, I've got the back lot. Utilized up there. But I don't drive up there with the car or. Put it in the garage, I drive up there with my truck, get stuff out of the garage, but.
So I take it that, that you don't have a, you're okay with the variance as requested by.
Actually, I, I feel this was, the variance ought to be, ought to be able to build within five feet of the right of way. That would give you about 20 foot setback behind. From towards Pennwood. And then the sidewalk, he's fine.
But you don't have a problem with variance that are requested here?
No, I have no problem with it requested.
And did they, you sent, I mean, the people behind know about it and the people on.
I sent out. Or maybe. One minute. We have a new executive assistant and she was very kind to send them out and there are. That many that were sent out to a planning board and the same were sent out for, I don't know the copies. So there are two pages. Two pages of labels, I had one call on it, it was Mr. Steel, Matt Steel. And he didn't have any clue. It's the only thing I've got. And it looks like Mr. Penniman's on there, I don't know if he has an opinion either way.
Good. We have any other questions? It's not, I entertain a motion to go into deliberations, closing public session.
So.
Second. All in favor? It's like, that's a. So. I'm listening to have it.
I, I think this is a very straightforward variance request, you know, so it says, I used the term earlier, historical encumbrance. But 60, 70 years ago. It's, it's, it's unused. I'm going to see if he using it as a, as a distribution right of way. It's an unused. Right of way, so I, I don't think this is a difficult one to decide.
Second.
I mean, we have and will go through them, certain criteria that we have to apply before we can grant a variance. The, and they're sort of. The and they're sort of, we say them every time, but some of them are more true sometimes than others, and. Um, one of them is that the the need for this variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions. In the neighborhood, if I had to think of a particularly case, and I've been on the board since, you know, Moses was a teenager. Um, who I, you know, this is it, this is just a a classic case of that, and the granting of the variance will not. Alter the essential character of the locality, well, we've got the next door neighbor, or he has his. Garage back there, and and others do as well up there, and in terms of the land in question. We're referring to that lot, we argued maybe both lots, but they're two different lots.
Yeah.
Uh, and that lot, I don't know what else you could do on it, uh, I mean, you could do something on it, but this is, you have to, you'd have to. Get a variance to do most anything on it, it could, to me, I think that's the case, so I'm I'm in favor of. Granting the variance, uh. And it sounds like we three are.
The only thing I had, I heard them say that. They were gonna put. A driveway between their house and the new garage.
We are not.
Just, just. Just for the truck.
And then we'll go back.
Long and.
Oh, okay, all right. Because that's why.
I'm deaf, so I.
No, 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 there's been a lot of questions too, so I understand completely, yeah, but no, we do not intend to use it.
So that driveway would be right next to your house, right, I mean, you don't.
If you need a purple lawn, it would not be.
Yeah, no, it's just, this is the construction way, and then it would be longwood seat, paved over and grass. So I, the only thing I wouldn't be concerned about.
Yeah, go ahead.
At a later date, they would start using it for their motor vehicles, they use that right away for a general roadway.
Yes, that would be a problem, but.
Because this gentleman here parks his truck there, and I mean, he's closer to the paved pot anyway.
Well, there's a, there's a lot between, there's, there's two lots between me and that, the paved pot.
Yeah. What was the problem? There's a lot between you and the paved pot.
Yes.
Okay, so if I want. Take my truck out, I'm owed a machine or whatever, I've used the right way, the eighth one. Come around, let it dry.
Let it dry.
Thanks, you. Right, it it wouldn't be crossing the lawn.
Hopefully next year, fingers crossed, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's the priority, this uses more to be making decisions of our, or.
No, I'm.
Setting, uh, it's just stipulations.
It's clear in my head, it's just clear to me, so I understand.
Sure, no, that's the way, yeah, it's.
And Ron, we had.
How do you want to say, cases of this nature, um, we usually have plans, could we confirm from the applicant that this is a single story and. Uh, non, not to be inhabited?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
So you do, do you have plans for the building?
I I do.
And have you?
Right now, it's literally twenty four by twenty four, sort of, and it's not two stories.
Well, I think that we should, uh, it, I think we will grant the variance, but we should condition that on receiving on. On sets that it's going to be a single story, and what else, what other conditions do you, I mean.
In inhabited, does it not?
Maybe there's a lot more to go for.
Well, in their application, they say no water, no sewer, no electricity.
When you, Mark, when you say there's a lot more to go, now, if they get the variance, then they have to submit the, uh.
No, so they're they're firing up along on this one, so basically, they've been planning board, uh, in order to be a habitable structure, they would have to get. Power, uh, they would have to get sewer, they have to get water up in there, and that's probably not.
And we have a, the condition is that it's going to be single story.
Yep, that can be provided in the application, that's.
Okay, yep. Well, with that, uh, with that condition, I would entertain a motion. To grant the variance and.
Just, just, you know, I basically stated, there's no variance.
Okay.
And so I move with the volante question, cannot grant a reasonable return without a variance.
All in favor, raise your hand. Or I second it, okay, now we'll raise our hands.
I move that the need for, for the variance is due to unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in neighborhood.
Second it, all in favor?
Move that the granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
Second it, all in favor?
I move that the hardship is not the result of action taken by the applicant or prior owner.
Second it, all in favor?
I move that the variance request for case twenty three dash one. For a fourteen foot setback, or a twenty foot setback, you change to fourteen on the front side. Be granted.
From the right way.
From the right way.
On. Second it.
Second it.
All in favor? Well, you're gonna have a lot of noise around your house for quite a while.
I have one question.
Delay, no, I'm just kidding.
This hearing is is.
So they have to build fourteen feet off the right way, or can they build five feet off the right way?
They applied for fourteen feet, that's.
I'll redo it, but I just, like I said, I'll hold bottom projects, because I do not want to cut.
That's what we have.
Yeah, what you applied for is what we approved. We can't.
So, no, it's it's an angled right away, ours will still be lined up when we were built.
Okay, all right.
But with the way it's shaped out, right?
It would be more aesthetically appealing if it was five feet.
I just didn't understand.
You applied for fourteen feet. We can't, we can't alter the the plan, we can't alter the variance now, or.
That's, that's my question, you can't alter what they applied for, you have to reapply and all that, I don't want to do that, they want to get the stuff. They want to get the snowmobile in there, they'd be snowballing the ground before they get the building.
Cut it out when it's snowing, you're gonna use a snowmobile.
It's gonna be the front yard with a cover on.
Where's Tommy, mom?
Well, your part's done, so you're welcome to stick around, I don't know how much else we have, but we may have some more.
No, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
It'll be minutes for this meeting, the next is a potential for one on the twentieth, I know Danny said he would be here.
I will not be here.
Glad you won't be here.
On what day?
The twentieth of September.
That isn't Tom Meiser's, is it?
Yeah.
Well. So here's the deal, Tom Meiser, Rick Dory, and I are really good friends. And I I would prefer if I wasn't sitting here when Tom Meiser was in your ass.
So he'll be here on the twentieth.
Who are you gonna have, are these guys gonna be?
They'll be done, they'll be ready.
Okay.
That's why I got the.
Good, that's perfect, that works out really well, and I I already told Tom that he was never gonna get it as long as I was sitting here, so. That way I don't have to, I don't have to.
For which part?
For the twentieth.
I have not done that one yet, that is not, we're not, we're not there yet, but we will. It'll be going on.
So then it'll be just the three of us, Ron, Al, and myself?
Yep.
I let him know that.
Ron is then chair. Uh, would you, would you abstain anyway?
I would, I would recuse myself, you know, I, over my time, I've had two next door neighbors come in and I. Recuse myself, okay?
I'll let him know there'll be three.
One of them was one of the funniest things. Pardon?
Well, it's just makes for a tight vote sometimes, if it's just three of us, then you have to, as long as they understand.
I'll let them, I'll give them that option, I'll let them know it's only three voting members, the other two are, I don't even know what he wants to do, right? We did not discuss it at all, I'm looking back at who's gonna do it, so, you know, just as an addition, and they have to move to the upstairs. Which isn't the variance, but then there's a garage that. Would need a variance.
Well, anyway, we should be talking about.
No, we shouldn't.
It's just the fact that it's three of us.
There is something I'd like to talk about.
Yes, sir.
This, this is a legal procedure. I really think we need to tighten this up a little bit more. Yeah. I think this is, this is probably my twenty something year, this is the leastest. Meeting I've ever been at, you know, there are, there is a spelled out procedure in terms of how. The discussion is structured, you know, with the presentation by the. By the applicant before any questions get asked. Then we ask questions, and we close, and don't ask any more questions than, you know, this. It may not be an issue for something like this, but if we have a more complicated one, that's more controversial. And we do it the way we just did it now, we're gonna open ourselves to some real. So it may be a potential quarrel.
I don't know when the next one is, but if anybody wants to take, um. The MMA's version of planning boards, law court of appeals, um, class that they give. I'll find it out, send email to you guys, anybody wants to sign up for it, we'll pay for it, you guys will go, just kind of basically goes through the formatting of how. These type of meetings are handled, how planning board should be handled. Could refresh it for you?
Online thing or?
What's that?
Online thing or?
Yeah, it'd be Zoom.
Am I, am I being unreasonable?
Well, I think you put your finger on it, that there are different horses and different types of cases, um.
But we may not.
I I practiced law for forty years, I was an administrative, full time administrative law judge. I know something about running.
So I know you do.
And I can learn as formal a hearing as anybody, but. For me, I mean, I think these cases are, having photographs, having the applicants. Talk to us about the photographs, you know, if we get to a system where. They can get a photo of, everybody can look at the same photo.
I'm not sure what's going on there.
And and talk about it, that is really gonna be good.
Yes.
I agree with you entirely that, you know, that should be done. When the applicant is presenting their questions, and in the second phase, when board members are asking their.
I will tell you, I emphatically tell people, like, you need detailed site plans, you need detail. And they bring me stuff, and I'm like, you need detail, and this is what they bring me, so that's what you get.
Right, and.
And at some point, I could, I could just reject the the, um, application altogether, and say, you know, he's still a bit better.
Well, somebody said, you're a lot better than other people at at stating their case and telling us what they want and why they want it, these people were pretty.
And I read, I read the application, and I tried to get to the property, so I can take a look.
Yeah.
And I went over there, day before, days once, a day before, Monday morning, I went over, middle of the morning. And I says. He owns, this is his house, this is the way he wants built, because he got it all cleared off, and staked off. And this is a CMP right away, there's no access to it other than that firewall.
Well, you get, you get better than I did, because I went there, and actually, Rick Dory had told me how to get there. I still couldn't get there, I stood there in the front, I took a picture, and I, I have no idea how to get back there, I could see the lines back there, but I.
Well, I, you're you're alone, I don't, I try to grasp, try to figure it out, because these cases are du novo. So, in a du novo case, are you allowed to visit this thing? Or are you supposed to take the information given to you and make your decision based?
Oh, yeah, in the old days, in the old days, you know.
We can always ask, we can always say, we'd like to have a site visit.
Absolutely.
Anytime. I try to go.
Yeah.
So I have some recollection of what they want to do, and get, I drove up the fire lane and stopped. And I says, okay, it's up there somewhere, and I walked up, slop, 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 and everywhere.
We used to, way, way, way back, we used to have, uh, official site visits, where all the, everybody would go out. And it is a concern, uh, if you stop and talk to the property owner. Correct, you probably shouldn't do, and that's why I don't do it, I stop taking pictures and move on, you know, and that's why also, I didn't go up back, but all. The other reason is I couldn't figure out how to get up there.
Well, I looked at, I looked at the 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 map of the town map, and it showed that fire lane. There's a fire lane up there somewhere, so I drove beyond, oh, there it is, right there. I seem like I go up the avenue about every once a week anyway, just because.
Are we allowed to go to check out property, or like you said, are we supposed to just listen to their case?
We're supposed to, the more information you can have as a board member, the better, the only reason not to go, uh, check out the property is if. You happen to be there, and they were there, and they tried to engage you in a one on one discussion.
Right.
We're not supposed to prejudge these cases. Um, so, I mean, but when I first was on the board, that was a. You, you were supposed to all show up and take a look at the property, and of course, it was nighttime most of the time, and.
Right.
God knows what we saw, but we showed up and we looked at what we could look at.
So to do that, it would be a a legal notice, it would be put in the paper, because if you guys, maybe as a, as a group, it's a meeting, it's a public meeting. I don't probably see, I don't think there's any harm in going up and looking at what he showed. You know, on the, on the plan. I'm gonna do it together on a one basis.
I mean, my.
I mean, and if you go up and look, by the way, this is probably all staying, being reported.
It is, until you want to adjourn the meeting.
I I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I gotta do K and L. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I think you can make procedural ones, so, second, all in favor?
You never turned mine off anyway. So back to my, that's my call. I would.